Is there any public discussion? Okay, we'll go down to open bids for Cascade System for Helen Rescue Ralph County, and open bids for one or more SCBA units for Helen Rescue for Ralph County.
One pile is... One group of... One pile is it?
I don't remember that.
Don't you know?
Yep. You don't. We don't have any care sharp things.
That's it.
We don't have any care sharp things.
Well, this is terrible. I'm right here. Yeah. Don't read that.
Back in me.
Yeah.
Was it Christmas?
Huh?
Was it Christmas?
Well, maybe for those guys. It's gonna feel like Christmas if you pay the bill.
You work and work and work, and it's open and done in fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I've heard. Oh, he did. Get it out of the water. I'll put all the trash in here.
This is from Chief. Does he know who it's from?
Fire and Chief.
Oh, Chief Fire and Safety. Says, "Any Avon Protection whatever. Built the CBA with forty-five hundred PSI, forty-five minute carbon cylinder, air switch mask with integrated voice amp, integrated pass and red mask, four thousand four hundred sixty each, and Avon Protection Cylinder Three, forty-five hundred PSI, eight hundred seventy each." The SCBA's. I keep on sex scoobing. See attached, of course. You got names on those? This is Casco Industries Incorporated. MSA G1 forty-five hundred SCBA includes one-year flow test, three thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars. MSA G1 forty-five hundred cylinder, eight hundred fifteen. MSA G1 face piece includes fit test, two hundred fifty. I need a fit test on that. What do yours say? God, they take this up too. Talk about ceiling. Let's see what it's for.
I can't read it.
Stand. Single-phase compressed air storage system. These are different ones.
That's what I'm thinking. For the Cascade.
I asked for the Cascade.
Yeah.
I gave you one pile for the SCBA.
That's what I was... Four-two-year.
Casco Industry Incorporated, BAUVVR, Verticon E thirteen dash E one Auto Cascade, thirty-four thousand one thirty-five. Installation eight hundred, freight twelve hundred. So it'll be thirty-six thousand one thirty-five altogether. Which one's this?
That one. I don't know.
There is? This is a different one, right? Well, then look at me and bring aside. You got a good night?
Did you make sure all of them were?
Yeah, I just all take that.
That's what I said.
Did you make sure all of them were no rags?
Ooh, I didn't do that, no. Sorry.
Stand over there and sign it.
That was my trash.
I know, it was your trash can. It's okay, I'll into your trash can.
Northern Safety and Industrial. Scott Storage System, UN six thousand four, Rack Wall Mountain, twenty-foot hose, six thousand six hundred thirteen sixty-five. Stationary Guardian Charge Station Dual Pressure, two point two and two, four point five with CGA adapter, nine thousand six hundred seventy-five twenty-nine. Scott Stationary Compressor Simple Air, six thousand PSI, single-phase sixty-eight, eighty Hz, and ten horsepower, open and closure, blue, white, English, glued slash white English with charge station mount, twenty thousand two hundred thirty-six. Installation and training charge, four fifty, air test charge, thirty-seven thirty-five. Mileage rate from Okocine up to Ralph County, one hundred thirty-seven miles, fifty percent of miles, sixty-eight fifty. I don't have to read all that, do I? This is northern, too. These are SCBA's.
SCBA.
Yeah, that's right, okay. Oh, yeah. For one eighth is four thousand seven hundred five seventeen.
Four thousand one, that was again?
Huh?
Four thousand one.
Seven hundred five seventeen for one. Scott SCBA air pack times three with CGA standard harness. Forty-five hundred PSI Quick Connect Regulator Pass with pack tracker console in the case. Safety, forty-five minute, forty-five hundred PSI G Carbonous CBA Cylinder, nine hundred fifty-seven, ninety-eight. Then the Scott AV, three thousand HT Face Piece with Kevlar head harness, four strap with right communication bracket, two hundred and seven forty-two. Scott Epic Three Voice Sampler, three hundred sixty-one fifty-two. That's a northern, too. So now, here you go, guys. You can study.
Them all over?
Yep. SCBA's here, and those stuff right there.
Those new SCBA's are a lot lighter weight, too.
Oh, that changed a lot, haven't they?
Oh, man, we've got to do it, Dave.
Are they?
Man, they're a lot better.
All right. All right, you said it's up to discussion.
I think you did.
Yeah. All right, let's go to the minutes, please. I'm not reading all this.
You look great, Toby.
You're great.
Right. Will you be a chairman next time?
I'll love him when I'm chairman.
Chairman, the way it changed next time, yeah.
Don't take so.
I think so.
We don't want Jay in there.
Yeah.
Be careful what you say you want.
I put a little lot just to...
That would not hurt me, Dave.
That's a good one.
Listen, she's...
It looks like Toby did such a great job.
That's definitely me.
Like nine twenty...
You watched that hair, what you said back there?
Yeah.
I mean, they'll be good, so, sorry, you know.
She's not got protection.
Right.
Move that, man, a second.
Said I carry a gait, it's easier to take naps.
Maybe we just might have the bigger picture.
Stay in my elevator, so.
All right.
You're behind, son, you're behind.
Hold favor?
Yeah.
Try.
You're busy.
Give her another one, she'll play me that. Raise hand.
No, it's all good.
Told you it was coming.
Yeah, it's all.
People get angry at me when I don't run those.
It's fine, it wasn't any big deal. Everybody's got my phone number now. I was trying to get it out.
How to get what out?
My phone number.
They did it for free for you.
They got it out for free.
Just trying to help you how I can.
You know I got some calls on that? Every call I got was from Kansas. See, your paper works pretty well. Can you believe that? Yeah. People that were saying, laughing about it, called me, and every one of them was from Kansas. Boy, you're doing a good job down there. Okey.
Yeah. And you're not the first commissioner to get a letter.
And you won't be the last.
I sent you down to Oklahoma to do a good job. You get in there and get letters to the...
You know you're doing something right. I don't know where the rodeo office is.
It's one of those offices in the, um... In the new building?
East office in the new building, northeast corner.
Well, that's their... Yeah, but it's not rodeo office.
Well, I mean, yeah, no.
You said it's repair's rodeo office.
No, there's another office besides their office.
There is one in the back if they want to use it.
Oh, okay.
But they usually use the one up there that's their office, which is a cutting horse deal.
No, they fixed the lock on.
Oh.
Two hundred dollars, fixed the lock on. Somebody tore the lock out, it looks like.
Maryland.
Because I was sent to office up there in front, you know.
Another office that couldn't get it to lock.
I won't tell him down here if this needs to be bigger when I go down there and argue with him. Well, let me go get me out of jail.
Well, this is...
True, but he's out for me, I'm on the way. She'll get out of jail, she'll sit there and wait.
Yes, we're just thinking, are you sure about that?
Well, I guess she won't know.
See?
See?
I already told you, Stan, you had a chance.
They give you three hots in the cog.
Oh, we'll make sure you get out.
Yeah.
Eventually.
See the draw?
Just don't go in there. That's all I got to say about that. I try.
I can get pretty close in here. If you do that, I'll make sure you go in the front page. Pretty hard, huh?
Everybody will have your phone.
They want my autograph, won't they? They won't have my phone number, they already got it now. At least you didn't put your home address in there, Stan. That might have been better, because I might have got to fight his wife.
Where's the UCA lawn?
It means on Tuesday next week, right?
Tuesday next week, Monday's a holiday.
That's right.
Amen. And next week, the office is on Thursday, this will be on Friday then.
My wife explained to me like yesterday that we had to go to North Carolina one week and California the next.
Oh, wow.
Said, "Kind of want to do some traveling."
She explained it to you? I like how you phrase that.
I said, "Why can't we do things on one side of the country?"
Yeah.
Don't drop my luggage there.
I'll tell you what.
What happened there?
Guy went up on the thirty-second floor of open to wind and open fire on the crowd of people.
At an outdoor concert?
Fully automatic weapons.
Fifty of them, for sure.
An AR?
There's fifty, at least fifty dead and over two or three hundred injured before they got him taken out.
Is that Jason Albin concert?
It was?
He twisted off.
Sixty-four, five years old, huh?
He was.
So was his origin, I mean, was his...
His name was... I didn't watch very much of it.
Tell you what. Yeah. He lived there.
Just in his mid-sixties.
Chick-fil-A.
Never been in trouble, I heard, so he never had any...
Still hasn't.
Earth operations.
Still walking?
Earth operations.
I was about to say.
It'll make you twist off.
They... I think he shot himself. Well, could be.
Nine times out of ten, that's what happens. Usually they end up in a sewer, in a suicide.
Now, are you going to sign that one or not?
Cherokee Publishing Company, oh, being you guys, I didn't mind, we'll keep.
I'll sign it, there's your address and your personal cell and your wife's cell phone. All right. Just keep that one off, save one on the page every week.
Are you losing another one over there?
Go ahead.
Are you losing another one over there? I don't say for sure. I don't know anything about it. Thursday's weekend.
This one, third one.
Yeah, that's what I can say. Any more on this? What is they?
Second.
Ten-two. Are you going to do more for us?
No, but I...
Do you really want this?
My name's over there enough, so.
Well, that's a good...
Imagine a hospital.
It's wrong, yeah.
What?
The hospital.
I could get them in all time that way.
Up there.
The danger is raining.
The hospital.
That truck is pouring.
Where?
Part of it.
Just all those hospitals. Yeah. All of them coming in.
Kobe.
Or even, shoot, and the nine-one-one call, that one, the rescue, get...
Probably all kinds of...
They had...
Yeah, there was...
They had, uh...
But no, I don't...
That's Tony. And how they, how they organized it. Usually takes about a second week before I'm still looking at it later. Right. New month. The year just kills me, takes me to the worst during the new year.
It's hard to say what's been worth to a lit fan for a shirt for Shane the Forward, Shania Walberg.
I know. I told them, I told that one, because this one was here first, I told this one, we're changing her name to like Sally or something.
Yeah.
There's a Shin... Oh, that's true, too. There's a Shania that's new, and I always want to call her Shayna, and...
Where is she working at?
Part-time in the assessor's office.
Shania?
Yes, we're changing her name. It's too close to Shayna.
A lot of times people spell my name with a Y in it.
Well, I'm...
And I'm like...
I had to think before I say her name.
Is she the lead part-part-part-time one?
Yeah, she goes out on visual inspection.
The job no one else wants.
They had a couple applied for her.
Excellent.
Well, that's cool, Jennifer Thompson, I know she's looking for someone.
That's the job you're under, is getting shot at. Poor Lacy, still ordering back for nothing.
That felt so bad. She called me, and I'm like, "No, I've gotten a notification."
But I'm looking at that. How come we're buying Shayna a jacket? That's what I'm looking at, and oh, Shania, okay.
I'm getting a jacket, coldy.
Pick the string out of the eye.
Don't make your right.
So the assessor's office, I'm saying, "Huh, what's going on down there?"
Office supplies at Walmart.
Well, sheriff, ain't it?
Yeah.
It's Halloween candy, isn't it?
I think I better stay out here next time I spray. So spray courthouse for pests. I better not be around.
You seen all the little, red light bugs all over the place?
You know it's working, then, huh? A lot of them consider me pests. I missed one.
We got another one here, though.
I'm gonna run next door to take care of some stuff, but I'll be back after the meeting.
All right. Oh, okay, that's in waiting.
Give that back.
All right. That's in waiting.
Just want you to know, since I just worked out the paper, we've got two or three letters to the editor about the paper, so...
I'm gonna come by there after the meeting and pay, so I get the paper. I'm missing out on two months.
Yeah. I can give you a free copy of last week's paper if you want.
Oh, I don't care about last week. I was waiting till after it to get my subscription.
Now, I really think you ought to give all three commissioners a complimentary subscription to the paper.
You don't look good in orange, you don't want that.
I don't think any of the offices here pay.
Do what?
I don't think you pay for your paper. We just like them all better than you. You what? Technically, the commissioner's office does give one, don't you?
Do what?
Doesn't the commissioner's office get a newspaper? Yeah. Technically, you do, you just have to come up here and read it. You got some more letters about what? We haven't got anything recently, I mean, besides...
I believe except the orange.
Hold favor?
Aye.
Proportions. Since I've been in the paper, I've had it. Yeah, well...
Now, if you're not doing anything, you don't do anything.
Didn't lose any sleep, though.
All the calls I got were pretty funny.
Still confused on part of it.
So it's your problem?
Yeah.
I figured out the whole one. Good one, guy, drive by, watch my bit on the road. It's that, you know, like... I'm gonna quit being tonight to him.
I just call them like they are.
Yeah.
Um, next Tuesday, we have an officer meeting at nine. Don't forget, guys.
You're not gonna stay that long, are you?
Huh?
You're not gonna stay that long, are you?
What'd you say we have an officer meeting, lady?
Next Tuesday morning, nine o'clock.
I was thinking tomorrow, maybe, but tomorrow will be the...
Tomorrow's six, I suppose.
I know.
Yeah, next Tuesday is...
Nine, yep. Do we have the commissioner's meeting before that?
After.
After.
Yes, we're gonna work next Monday.
Yes, sir. He said, "Yes, sir."
Remember, "Hell yeah, sir."
If I showed up, guess what, I would be getting in. Well, I guess it would get into the... If I showed up, guess what, I would be getting in, well, I guess it would get into the side, but it would get very far.
It's pretty nice when you show up on holidays and nobody's here, snow days, and there's nobody out, it's, you get a lot of work.
You get, you get a lot done.
I like those days, if they, a lot of holidays, they think we're closed, but we're not. So no one comes in or nobody.
That's funny. We usually get, usually the other, they're like going, was it a holiday yesterday or something, you guys didn't answer your phone at all, you need an answering service, no, we don't.
No, we don't need anything.
Can you imagine though?
Just call back.
If you had like an answering machine.
Especially like on Columbus one, because not everybody takes that one, yeah.
I mean, like, you'd spend all Tuesday making phone calls, return everything.
Our answering service is callback?
Yeah. The phone starts ringing there before seven o'clock sometimes, and it's still ringing after six o'clock in the evening, I'm like.
Over there?
Do you answer?
I usually do.
We, it's actually five o'clock, and we're still never like, sorry, we're closed.
Well, some of them can be at a different time, so, a lot of times, I'd be at a different.
Ninety percent of it when I answer, it's we're upstairs, and I'm like going, um, and they're closed, well, why are you answering?
Yeah, that's what you love.
Because I did mean to.
I was trying to be nice, but you're pushing that.
Don't call back, because I'll know you're.
Well, I'm wondering that now, you asked me.
I move, we can't get a.
Jay Moon and Stan Second, all in favor?
Aye.
They're all going for Harold Pitt for.
Oh yeah, not the officers report.
Their sheriffs and mine. Something.
I got.
Make all try, I'll file it.
Try it.
I can't keep it.
Willis, about halfway through the pile, he'll start signing with his initials.
Right, right.
The other one time he signed, he left him, he'd be the one documenting the.
The other day, Paul.
I think that you're not a national.
Well, it's about the way I do it anymore, it's an R and W, whatever. So chat.
All the time, I'll never know.
Chat, chat.
That's why I don't mind me.
Sign it, it's a CR or something.
I just hear those penmanship.
I hear my grandma going, I told you to write those.
I've seen enough prescriptions, doctors, they're educated people and everything else, so yeah, I can do, I can sign this like them.
First letter, line, the last letter, line.
What they teach them is, drive where you can't read it. Move, check dogs, darn near on the ball.
Second.
Toby got the second on there.
All in favor?
I'll just do the I. I'm way behind, I may have further ahead than I usually.
I'm sleeping on the highway experience, you got them. Ah, we're just going on there, whatever, you guys are waiting. I make a motion to approve, all in favor? Allocation of alcohol and beverage tax, this is what Harold Pitt will talk about.
Yeah, he likes.
Yeah, he'll love it, yeah, yeah.
The one you like me to ask you.
The what?
The one you like me to ask for.
Yeah, yeah. I had to look for it three times, and I finally went over to the treasurer's office, and I said, did you give it to me, and she looked through it once, and finally she looked through the second time, she's, oh, here it is, she, I knew I did it. She knew I was putting it on top for me, and I just was overlooking it.
We're getting, at least getting.
I'll make, I'll make the motion on this one. I gotta give it one.
Motion to what? To approve it.
Approve. Approve.
Okay, good thing you came for second.
All in favor? Here we go, here we go, the blanket purchase, I don't know how it fits.
There's one. Just second, I think. Just second.
Get them first. Got it, yeah.
The only reason that would miss more is because that's a new phone, I hate them.
T H Rogers. S and S Pest Control. Just what account, right, Olivia?
Yeah.
Let me know, get to it is.
Just to what account is.
Jack's automotive.
Account, like, as a sheriff.
Fireboard, sorry.
That's not the first round.
Same thing. It's a place, yeah. Cherokee Post Supply. Cherokee's Hardware Fairgrounds. It's all fairgrounds.
Step far.
Just take it.
I'll, I'll tell you what the.
Do you want to prove it is, or the company it is?
It'll be just a few minutes.
Fairground.
Fireboard.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Oh, how about you, you courier?
Yep.
Select us.
I know.
All right, hey, I didn't get that picture till this morning, so anyway, I'll call you back.
It's fairgrounds too, they're all fairgrounds around these. Fuel services. All right, we're back to, we're county sheriff now? How you know it's county sheriff, be too bad. No, see that.
You have to sign it, doesn't, county sheriff?
Nope, town sheriff, yeah. Sorry, they're watching you, never too.
County sheriff. So, the old sheriff?
This is assessor.
Oh, such fine, sign that either.
Yeah.
I made a mess.
You should have one of them here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'll go back, no need.
Lou, we're shit from one to first.
All in favor? I'm pretty sure those guys done, I dare we get, take care of them, and we go back up there. I don't know where that could have come from yet.
Well, it'll, you'll be missing.
They're giving to her, she'll be grabbing, you're off, you're clear.
I lost one last time, never heard the end of it.
There's a hard to come by in my office, maybe it's just on my desk, it's hard to come by.
They're supposed to pull the money into your account.
That's right.
No road crossing, that's okay.
Ah, something's going wrong.
You want to go back and take care of these gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
You in a hurry?
I'm not ever in a hurry.
Okay.
For the cath- yeah, for the, yeah, the cascade system and the, yeah, CBA system.
Cascade system?
Uh huh.
We'd like to deal with Casco.
The bid, you want that bid? What is a cascade system?
That is what fills the cylinders, breathing apparatus.
Okay.
Twenty-four, six thousand PSI.
I don't want to touch the meeting then.
Yeah. On the SCBAs, we're gonna go with chief. And. Chief figured theirs with one cylinder, so we're gonna go with eight of the cas- or eight of the SCBAs, we will only need eight. Extra cylinders. Because they figured at the end of their price were four.
I'm glad you did that, but it all figured out.
Were they the lowest bids on both of them, or did you notice the other? Thank you.
Lowest.
One night behind you.
We were hired on cylinders, but.
Together, yes, yeah, okay, that's all, we just needed a reason. Thank you, gentlemen.
Let me see this one.
So we accept their recommendation for what they want.
For lowest, they'll be the lowest.
Lowest, is it lowest, yes, ma'am. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Take care of that, bro. Have fun, put them all back in.
With Sam's trash.
Request. Yeah, request that Shayna Smallwood Buchanan is receiving also for jet responders. How about for all fire departments?
That'd be.
I've only had the one request come through, so.
You just don't like me, right?
I just do a man's, I have requested, I meant to ask Donna if they want to do that.
I figured as they, as they want to change that, they can request it. If that's okay with you guys.
You can do one, you can do them all, I don't need to do them all.
Yeah.
Well, what was it, for, for seeing, yeah.
It might end up that way, but right now it's just jet. Only because they were the only ones requesting.
Worked commercial. Jet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got a uniform price adjustment, do we?
Doesn't say what the price adjustment's gonna be, it said there's gonna be one. Somebody else got more.
Except for here, for ours.
They came to us, I don't know if that's all way across to everybody, I would assume it would be. But that's all it was given to me, was just a letter.
They adjusted it down.
I'm sure, yeah.
They're not feeling bad because they're charging too much.
Modest price increase. September fourteen.
Has it gone into a record?
No, it's just.
Beginning on around September fourteenth.
The one that, the one that they, we just paid though in September did not have it on there. He did tell us that, that, since he hadn't gave us that, that it was not on there, that the bill that will get in October, it will be on there.
I don't know how much.
Yeah, they're gonna have a price adjustment, don't know what to eat, boy.
We could table, we could table it, we could call them.
I, I think I would.
Yeah.
We don't know what the price is.
Right.
Sure don't wanna.
It's like signing.
I move, we take.
Like signing the bike ticket.
Second, all in favor?
What are you guys gonna call them yet?
Yeah. I got two girls here that can call right now. You want this back, or?
I've been going on the agenda again.
He goes for second. He's for second.
Yep.
Stand. Tattles, are you ready? Tattles, two bridges approached plans.
Just two copies, send one back to them.
No.
And I'll keep one.
Yeah, that's where, that's where the bridge is at.
Where's the bridge at?
It's, uh.
Mile North Glasses Speed Lot.
Yeah. Couple miles east of Tacoma. Back north mile, is that right?
Yeah.
Two, two east, one west.
Is that, Tacoma's just another mile, isn't it, or is it two miles?
The Tacoma's right on them.
It's one, it's one mile, so it'd be two miles east of Tacoma and one north.
Yeah, the Tacoma's one mile east of Cali, west of Cali.
Is it the same bridge?
No, that's just a bridge in special, I forgot to give him his, his wasn't a big old huge thing, it was a little one, and like.
Oh, that's the deal?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I wonder why I didn't get my big old book like this.
You already got a big old book, probably.
Yeah, okay. That makes perfect sense.
Some bridges are inspected. Uh, often, often rather than others, because they're for, yeah.
Oh, right there.
It's, you know, Mount North, it's right around the corner, I'll break for.
Yeah, back to these hundred yards or eight and a quarter mile.
You come look, you look at this, you want to.
I made your bridge.
I'm saying. This is all we got, this, this first sheet. I don't, I don't see where it says.
No.
Bridge length sixty foot, two and five eights. I found it. Right there.
Yep.
I bet that bridge ain't that long now, is it?
I was gonna say that bridge is sixty-five foot, Maria, it's what I recall.
Huh?
They're, they're linking it out.
Sixty foot. You know where Gina Whit lives? Two miles south there, and three miles west, no, three mile north. When it says bridge length sixty foot, two, sixty foot, two and five eights, I don't know why they put that two and five, five eights on me, it's.
Call it, I'm just gonna call it the sixty foot bridge.
Yeah. Do you need most to accept that?
I'll move.
So do we need a motion to accept that? Okay. Got most, second. All in favor?
It's right, you got the money for your.
Well, yeah, well.
So that's C R D money.
Report, yeah, report of conference for District one, two, and three.
Are they pushing all these, I'm gonna start pushing all these bridges, they're in a hurry, just to make sure they get the money.
Okay.
Do what?
So I got something along.
Yeah.
Now they're slowing them back.
I figure they're, they're probably expecting more, paying more cuts with, having to redo them.
I'm never even everything back, aren't you telling me?
Well.
We ain't.
Not as much as I.
Some of the more current ones here, they're going to go ahead and do.
Yes, defense works out.
Down the road, they're already cutting that.
Figure with.
That's what, yeah.
That'll be another one of those agencies that'll take a big cut.
Mm, that's one I haven't listed.
I've got a copy there.
Oh, yeah, he said to give you a copy of it as soon as he has them, yeah.
Yeah, I looked at it, yeah, please.
He said to give all three of you one.
Ah, yes, I make a motion to approve.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-eight, you wanna do the one, do these all at once, or all the time?
I don't care, if you guys want to look at them, here's the lethal holidays.
Okay.
And I just went off of there, so, you look at, look at those.
Yeah, I'll do them all at once.
Put their calendar up, and I'm not sure I. Don't have extra holidays in. I'm sure I don't have extra holidays in there for Lenita's birthday, and Nancy's birthday, and Shayna's birthday, and Shania's birthday.
Pretty sure on Lenita's birthday, that she has to work, that's okay. Pretty sure that's on the agenda that way.
Well, we could always, if we have to change it, we can always change them, right?
Yeah, but then you have to send them under the state again. It's not a fun thing.
You probably, uh, looked at it, were pretty good, didn't you?
You have to publish this in our paper. Meeting days, can't remember.
What date?
Meeting days, I can't remember, you have to publish it.
Day of the week. Day of the week.
Yeah, it's all right. I got that listed. Most of my, most of my money comes from pair of holidays. Got you. I thought, do I forget those numbers?
Just let it go in. Make sure I did that. Now, is that okay on Christmas, the way we did Christmas and Thanksgiving again? You guys need to do, you need to check.
What we did.
I don't even remember. Christmas falls on a Tuesday, so I did Monday and Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
I did Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving.
No, I still got it right here.
I forgot it.
Christmas is on a plan?
Christmas is on a Tuesday.
Yeah, Monday and Tuesday, but, or, you know, Monday, yeah.
Well, I mean, we don't have to do two days.
Not.
You know, a legal holiday is Monday, we normally give them two days.
Right, right. We don't get, we, we can work Christmas Day, they might get mad.
Could do three.
Could do three? Money, well, just do it.
Let's just do the whole week.
Yeah.
Just give them the whole month.
Hey, that's another.
That's fair.
You're given, I'm taken.
I move with check to all the day.
We ain't done yet.
Yeah, I know, but.
Yeah, I know, but, well.
We're not gonna change anything.
I remember one year working on Christmas Day, 'cause you couldn't go nowhere near it, it was snow, it was deep, I was pushing snow.
Cold weather.
Really, we, we couldn't get to, up in Cherokee, so we just.
I second it now that we got through it, and how about that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that was all of them, right? Any unforeseen business?
Move with you given.
Okay, I second that.
Go ahead. Where you need Lonnie?
Well, I, I just, uh...
Since the meeting's over, y'all can tell.
Yeah, well.
All in favor?
What I, what I need is all three of you to come out and pave the crystal road.
Oh. That's what I figured.
Yeah, yeah. Pave the crystal road. You gotta go out there on your goddamn tractor and ride down that damn road.
Yeah, it's rough, I know.
Even in my, even in my wife's Cadillac.
Yeah.
Now, she usually drives the fastest, she misses the bumps. Oh, God, look at that road, guys, this is tough.
Yeah, I know.
Knock out all the trees, trees and tangy, and get the tangy cleaned out. I'll come back next week for the rest of it.
Okay, okay.
It just, it just seems to me like that whatever unison you have to work with the city, uh, it can be harder.
No.
To work together, do whatever needs to be done. Okay.
Okay.
That sure has been a nice being here. Here, I do like to just.
Oh, thank you.
Been a nice being here, well, good.
Thank you.